And we'll start with the pledge.
A pledge made in the name of the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we are going to get started with the public forum. I have one statement I would like to make first. Since we've had some rather well-publicized discussions at open forums, the city went through values transparency and accountability, and we take all complaints seriously. However, we are also committed to protecting the privacy rights of our employees as is required by law. This means that while we thoroughly review and address every concern, we may be limited in the specific details we can share with the public about personnel matters. There is a structured process in place to ensure complaints are handled fairly and appropriately. We have secured an impartial entity to review the complaint process. Requests from residents or individuals seeking information that cannot be legally released is not allowed. We do ask for your patience as a community and trust in this and your city council as we work to address concerns while still upholding our legal and ethical standards. So basically, I just wanted to assure everybody that we are following all the steps and there we were not, we are not ignoring anything that's been brought to our attention. So with that, we can open the public forums. Anybody have something they would like to bring to our attention? Going once? Twice? All right. We can move on to approval of the agenda. Does anybody have anything to add? Michael Heather?
No.
All right. Somebody like to move to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda. Second.
Motion by Jenny, second by Kelly. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All's in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I pose same sign. Motion carried. The consent agenda. We have minutes, financials.
I just wanted to speak about the waste processing rates. So I included in your packet also the budget that looks at the specifically the waste account. So the Minnesota Waste Processing Company is telling us that they're going to increase their rates. We as a staff looked at it, and I don't think we need a rate increase. We currently are covering our costs associated with garbage, including printing bills and the extra collection days that we do in the spring and the fall, which residents are able to use. We're plus in that account, so we are not asking council to pass a rate increase, but I wanted for information purposes to let you know that it is increasing.
So move to approve the consent agenda. A second.
All right. Motion by Kelly, second by Dawn to approve consent agenda. Any discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I pose same sign. Motion carried. Public hearings. The first one is public hearing for the 2023 Utility and Street Improvement Project Assessments.
Now, I used to do stuff, so is this okay?
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Oh, yeah.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Brian Petzel. I'm civil engineer with ISG, and I was the engineer for the 2023 street project. We're here tonight to discuss the proposed assessments, and I'll briefly touch on the improvements that were part of the project, and then hopefully if there's any questions, I'll be able to answer those at the end. So if we review the project scope, it included Second Street, basically the entirety of Second Street, all the way from Brown Street to Hennepin Street. And then it did establish a utility corridor between Hennepin Street and County Ditch 42. That was in order to connect to the ditch for the storm sewer outlet, and also there's a sanitary sewer interceptor pipe that essentially parallels the ditch that was connected to as well. In addition to that, there was the alley next to the post office was improved, and the city parking lot was also improved. So the improvements, it was, you know, essentially a full-scale reconstruction project, utilities and street, both sanitary sewer, water main, storm sewer. Subsurface drainage was added to the project. That was something that was not in place before the project. Again, the alley was reconstructed as well as the street, and then there were some downtown streetscaping items that were also included as part of the project. So if we look at the sanitary sewer improvements, a new trunk main was installed from Brown Street all the way to the what's called the East Side sanitary sewer interceptor, and again, that's that pipe that essentially parallels the county ditch. The pipe ranges in size from 18 to 15 inch, which is similar in size to what the existing trunk line is that's essentially located on First Street. So this, this project more or less takes that existing trunk line on First Street and relocates it to Second Street for a few different reasons. One, to allow for DFA to expand it potentially in the future because of constructability issues with having the silos directly behind the curb on First Street. And then also, and whereas Second Street has about 80 feet of right-of-way to work with, so essentially doubled the right-of-way, and the cost associated with what it would cost to do like trenchless methods of installation of that sanitary sewer next to those silos. So for various reasons, that's, that's why the trunk main is being moved to Second Street. And because of that, there's some topography changes, so that also results in then some of that extra deep sanitary sewer up to about 35 feet deep at the highest, highest point of Carver Street. Pre-cast concrete manholes were installed. Services were replaced with the right-of-way. It also accommodated some future rerouting, including rerouting that existing trunk, trunk main on First Street to Second Street, as well as elimination of that Nicklet Street railroad crossing. And then it also provides additional depth for future upstream improvements because as, as we've helped the city with some future planning, we've identified some areas on Third Street actually that have some depth issues and some backup issues historically in the past, so this will provide more depth for the system in the future with additional improvements to come. Moving on to water main improvements. Water main was installed again, similar to the sanitary sewer from Brown Street all the way to Hennepin Street. And then additionally, there was a leg that was added between Brown Street and Ploton Street to add another fire hanger there for some additional fire coverage. New hydrants and valves were included with the system, and the services, again, similar to sanitary, were replaced with the right-of-way. For the storm sewer improvements, again, a new trunk main was installed all the way from Brown Street to County Ditch 42. Pipe sizes ranges from 72 inches to 24 inches. And again, in that same Carver Street intersection area, it gets pretty deep just because of the topography, and it gets up to about 31 feet deep there. A rerouter portion of the, the system that currently drains to the, that previous drain to that existing stormwater pond, just, I guess, southeast of the county shop there, it rerouted some of that to County Ditch 42. There are some known flooding issues in that area of Brown Street or between Brown Street and the county road. And additionally, there were some, some improvements that, or some drainage issues that were previously identified in the Nicklet Street intersection area that this, this project should hopefully help to improve. So, so previously, the previous storm sewer system was essentially designed for less than a two-year storm, so less than a 2.8-inch rainfall event in a 24-hour period, where this, this system was designed to handle a 10-year event, which is a little over four inches in a 24-hour period. Similar to the sanitary sewer, also accompanies future rerouting of the storm sewer from First Street to Second Street, which will help eliminate a couple of railroad crossings in the future. And then also kind of as, as a result of that, then eliminating those railroad crossings in the future, and even now with just intercepting some of that flow, it will alleviate some pressure on the system south of the railroad tracks, which also has some areas that have been identified as having some, some flooding issues. Subsurface drainage improvements, as I mentioned earlier, there was no subgrain system with the previous road. So with this one, with this project, similar to previous or recent city projects, we've installed subgrain behind the curb line on each side of the road, which helps provide drainage for that, that subgrade of the road to help prevent frosteding issues and maintain or help maintain the life of that, that pavement section. And then additionally, also allows us to provide foreign service tubs to every property so that residents can hook up there, property owners can hook up their, their sub pumps directly into that subsurface line, so that keeps that out of then the sanitary sewer system. Street and alley improvements, the, the non-county state aid highway portion of the road, so Brown Street to Redwood Street, that was constructed, designed to be an eight-ton road section, where the county state aid portion was designed to be a 10-ton section and to meet state aid design standards. As, as I noted in several of the most recent newsletters, the, the spring is when the wear courses plan to be paved, so because of all the trenching and especially some of the deep trenching, we want to make sure that the, the trenches have, have the opportunity to go through a freeze-staw cycle so that if there is any differential settlement or any settlement that we can address that before then that final wear course is paved in the spring. All streets were replaced, provided with new curb and gutter, sidewalks and driveway aprons and alley aprons. And again, the, the alley was improved next to the post office and installed, and concrete pavement was installed for that entire alley. Previously, it was, I believe, half asphalt, half, half concrete. The downtown streetscaping and parking lot items, so some of those items included the curb bump outs at intersections, which is largely to help produce or reduce, I guess, danger to pedestrians. So what it does is, is I'm sure some of you folks have been driving in that area now with the bump outs, that it does help produce slower speeds because it creates kind of a traffic calming effect just because of that, that technique of the roadway, and also it provides shorter crossing distances for those pedestrians. Some of the decorative features that are included in the project are listed here, planters, plantings themselves, bench swings, decorative panels, and, and the benches at the street quarters. The parking lot was previously just a gravel lot. It was upgraded to have the two-minute pavement and curb and gutter. So for the remaining project schedule, we're here tonight obviously for the assessment hearing, and then if, if all goes well, I guess, or if the council decides to move forward with the adopting the approved assessments, that would be done tonight as well, or could be done tonight. And then final completion again would be in the spring of 2025, when they can get out there, take care of any warranty items that maybe have popped up over the winter and get that final pavement that's installed. So as we look at the total project cost, the total projected project cost is just, just under $90 million, so $8,753,000. And that's largely based on work that's already been completed, but then because there's still that final lift of pavement to be done in the spring and a few outstanding items, which we have a pretty good idea of what those are going to be, we had to project out the final project cost. So, so for the most part, you know, the project's 95% call it done, but that extra 5% is what we had to project out. So this includes all costs with the project, not just construction, so surveying, engineering, testing, construction observation, permitting, financing fees, essentially everything that's, that's involved with the project, except the land acquisition costs for the few properties that were purchased outside of the, the bond. And again, the good thing about this is that it's trending under budget, so after the project was bid, we had, that's essentially the project budget, and we're trending lower, about 7.7% under budget based on our projection. So the project will be funded through, through various different sources, primarily through a bond issuance, which will be paid, paid through property taxes, utility funds, and special assessments. The reason we're here tonight is because of those special assessments, which have to follow statutory requirements of Minnesota statute 429, of which this hearing is a requirement. And then a portion of it will also be paid through county cost participation because about, well, basically the entire road from Redwood Street all the way to Hennepin Street, that is a county state aid highway. So the projected county cost participation is just over $3 million, so 3.175 million, which accounts to approximately 36% of the total project, which leaves the remaining $5,578,000 would be city costs. So moving on to the special assessments, the total assessment is calculated to be $582,117, or about approximately 6.7% of the total project cost. The way the city has historically and the way their policy states is that 25% of the total street project costs are assessed, so that does not include utilities. It does not include any of the streetscaping items, the parking lot or the alley improvements. The utilities are paid for out of their respective enterprise funds, and the special assessments are, are, are placed on the properties that are directly adjacent to the improvements. So the way the city calculates their assessments is on a unit basis, so every, every frontage essentially has a one, one unit. If it's a side frontage, it's a half a unit. The only, the only exception to that would be the civil county parcel because that is much larger than any other individual parcel, so that was, that was given two frontages or two units basically, which is consistent with, with how the city has treated similar situations like that on previous projects. And then as we look at the proposed versus the preliminary assessment, so back if you recall the last improvement hearing we had, I believe it was about a year ago today, give or take a week or so, the preliminary assessment amounts back then were calculated to be or estimated to be $627,503. What we're showing today, we're calculating them, those out to be about $1,000 less. So you can see that, I didn't bring it with me, but on the, maybe you have it on the last slide here. The one unit, then, the assessment for one unit would be $13,382 is what it's calculated at. The special assessments are proposed to appear on the 2025 tax statements at a rate of four and a half percent interest for a 20-year term. Minnesota statute 435 does law for the assessment, special assessments to be deferred for a couple of cases, including if the owner is 65 years of age or older, or retired by virtue of a permanent or hold of disability, or if the owner is a member of the Minnesota National Guard or military reserves in their call to active service. The assessment roll, which was sent to you as part of your notice and is provided here at the table, if you, if you didn't bring a copy, provides an estimated amount for assessments for each parcel. So I ran through everything relatively quickly in the interest of time, but are there any questions from the council or the group on the special assessments?
You said military. What do you mean by military? Retired or?
No, if you're calling, if you're on military reserves or National Guard, and you're called into active duty service.
Okay.
Thanks, Brian. We had two people sign into the public hearing for the 2023 Utility and Street Improvement, and I apologize. I think Dan Meyer is the last name?
Yeah, no.
Did you want to speak?
No.
Okay. I don't have anyone else on the list that wanted to speak.
Okay. And we don't have to read down the list or anything?
No.
Okay. If there's no more comment on that.
We can close that hearing.
Can we close that portion? Do we need a motion to do that, or can we just move on to the?
We can just move on, max, and close them all at once.
Then we will move on to 5.2, public hearing on changes to city code chapter two after operations and administration.
So chapter two really guides city council for city council meetings. It establishes our police department, our fire department, our ambulance department. And last year, if you don't remember, we started updating chapter eight. It was the nuisance chapter, and we felt like chapter two needed some additional changes. So the first change I have highlighted was we had changed it to the fourth Monday. I'm asking city council to put it back on the first Monday instead of the fourth. Same time, we're basically keeping all the other mandatory established rules for that. The order of business, we took out things like miscellaneous and some of the things that just were just not required and that we really haven't used for quite a while. I think miscellaneous, we stopped using in early of '22, just because it, it caused us to make decisions as a council that maybe weren't really well researched. We're going to just highlight under subdivision three on the agenda that really, to get on the agenda, you need to let the city clerk or administrator know three business days in advance. That's really no different than what we were doing before. It's really the Wednesday before the council meeting is when we need to know. It gives us time to properly prepare the documents, or if need be, say, hey, I don't think this was ready for a council agenda, let us float it by the council. Maybe it needs to go to a committee hearing. For instance, if someone is coming in and saying, hey, I want a new fountain in the middle of the park, you know, put it on the council agenda, let's get it going. Well, really, that should be to the parks committee first, and we did that with the donated memorial funds. That pretty much all went through the park committee before it went to council. And so we would treat those additional agenda items with the same care that we would do any other time. Voting and quorum is all the same. This is where things change a little bit in 201.06, the committees. So because we have a smaller council and because most of you sit on the same exact committees, I am asking that we collapse some of the committees. So there used to be, for those that didn't know, we used to have six committees. One of them was for police, one of them was for fire and ambulance, and so those two committees would have to meet separately on those issues and post-meeting dates separate. And so what we're asking city council to do is form three separate committees. One would be administration, bargaining, and personnel. Number two would be utilities, infrastructure, and parks. And three would be police, fire, and ambulance, so that when those committees met, we would be able to talk about all of those things on a, on a needed basis. The membership really doesn't change. I just took out the safety committee section. We actually don't form a safety committee anymore, and I don't know if we have since the 90s, so I'm just asking to clean up the language there. We talked a little bit before, I think at a, I don't know if it was an open public forum or if it was during one of the vacancy fills. So this vacancy policy has been in place since 2007. I highlighted in green, I didn't change any of it, but if council wished, now would be the time. But, you know, it, it really does lay out how a vacancy is, is filled, and they've been doing it that way, well, since 2007. And I believe that is about it. The rest of the chapter really focuses on police, fire, ambulance, and that would be the updates to chapter two.
The safety committee. I thought there was a reason we had to have a safety committee.
Yeah, there, there definitely used to be. The League of Minnesota City's Trust Insurance used to have each city have their own safety committee. It was in compliance with OSHA standards when it comes to fire and ambulance. Those responsibilities really are now on the fire chief, ambulance captain, and, you know, us as administration and Troy. And because they're, I would say, so involved, especially like with fire OSHA compliance, it is extremely involved. It's a daily thing now and not a once, a, once a quarter thing, so most, most cities got rid of this quite a while ago.
Anybody else have any questions?
And I didn't have anyone sign up for that one.
Okay. I think, and then rearranging the committees is very wise because that will make it, I think, much more workable for everybody. All right. If there's nothing else on that public hearing, we'll move on to 5.3, public hearing on truth and taxation 2025.
Yeah. So we set the preliminary levy at 6.3%. That is currently 14% below what our estimated budget was this last year. There were some inflated numbers in there for streets because we knew we were going to do some corrections on Grant Street. There was just, there was just a lot of things that we cut. And I, I just want to say, with council's help, the last two years, we've actually cut a lot of the expenses almost by 22%. So year over year, the last two years, we've reduced costs by 22%. And we did that strategically for a lot of reasons. Our lift station is one of them. You know, we put a lot of capital into correcting the lift station, the seals, the general maintenance of it. The lift station right now is using 30-ish percent less energy year over year than it had before. Now, we were in a drought this fall, so it's not a really great comparison, but, you know, even the windows in city hall, you know, people were a little bit concerned. Our energy bill, and we can show it on one of these other slides too, is considerably down over the previous years. I'm talking like $10,000 less on energy costs. So some of those things that we put into motion for our capital improvement project with the help of ISG, we have really identified things that need to be replaced and that we stop really patching things. Even water main breaks, you know, we did some stuff in the water plant that was pretty inexpensive but really effective, knock on wood. Since, since the early 2022, we have not had a major water main break. The one that we had up by Eighth Street, that was actually due to someone slamming a water main shut too fast. It wasn't necessarily an infrastructure problem. So anyway, that really reduces how much we have to operate with each and every year. We also took a look, look at our capital reserves when it comes to our department heads and what we really need in the future, and we determined that we could lower that, so we lowered it by 11% this year. It's a $20,000 difference. Our total budget, if we just stuck with it right then and there, would be about 14% less than it was the year before. So what I will say about that is this is actually inflated. We actually reduced costs much more than the 14%, but things that went up were insurance, work comp. Property insurance went up because we didn't have some major assets listed, so our property insurance did go up by almost 20%. So I think the department heads did a really good job at, at reviewing them. Revenue, so revenue is down 15%. That is predicted. Revenue in government is not always easy. If you look at building permits alone, we have it set really low because Heartland Corn Products the last couple of years have done pretty major projects, and that means that we get a considerable amount of revenue off building permits, which then goes to the state. But that's why that one is sitting so low. I, I would say our local government assistance and the rest of our revenue is fine. It was really, it was really the building permits that, you know, we can certainly adjust, and we can look at that as well. So the special sales for debt service and bond, this comes out of multiple bonds. We are making this more transparent so people understand where those GEO levies are at. Before, this was a category within our general government, and we really pulled it out so that people know where the project costs are coming from. So this is just a reminder that that 17870 is only for the general obligation. So from projects from 2015 to now, well, a little bit earlier than that, there were some other ones. So like our 2020 project, when we did Nicklet and, sorry, Carver and Hennepin, those costs are associated in there as well. So that is, it costs the city on just the general obligation bonds on their projects is about $170,000. So that's a 100% increase, but that was actually in our general levy at one point. So what we're asking council to propose tonight is the proposed tax levy at $960, $956. I don't know if the 56 cents is necessary, or a 6.3% increase, which is 57%. And again, a lot of that came to do to insurance cost increases and some revenue decreases.
What was the difference last year and this year with the LGA, the local government?
We got about $30,000 more than we did last year, I believe. Yeah, it was about $30,000.
What do they base that on? Anything?
I like the laugh. Yeah, so it's a very contrived formula that they use. They use it on, based on population, but there are 23 different factors that go into it, including infrastructure, how much we have done and increased. So for instance, a city our size, same size, may get more LGA because they've done more to fix our streets, sewer sanitation, and they do a little more.
Do we apply for that, or do they?
No, it's one simple formula.
And there was something like this project, wouldn't they take a look at?
Yeah, maybe next year or the year after. But they also look at how much staff you have and how much payroll is going through. There's, yeah, there's 23 different categories that go into it. But it did increase for the first time in a while. Are there any specific questions about a category maybe that you want to look at? I will, I do want to pull up parks because there's some general interest in parks. In our park budget, you know, we currently have an extra around $30,000, and the reason that we put that in there, and that's in- And the reason that we put that in there, and that's impacting the general levy is because they have a, what I would call, significant project with a splash pad. You know, that's not going to be without some errors here and there. So we did add that to it. So that'll pay for some of like the piping and some of the water that needs to be taken from the water tower. The other one is Farm City Fund Fest. Again, council gave the okay and the need, I guess, to continue to fund some Farm City Fund Fest activities to the tune of $10,000. Again, that was about what we spent this year on tent rentals. I can tell you that that committee, which I'm now ad hocly on, is very much looking at costs. They are looking at five less tent rentals this year than they did the year before. They're redoing the raffle tickets a little bit more towards a cash prize to try to make up some of those. So we are, they are working, I think, pretty hard at kind of turning that around so they're not dependent on the city. The other thing that city council heard last meeting is the, looking for it, is the Historical Society. The Historical Society asked for 6,000. Right now, it's only budgeted at 5.
Where did the extra 1,000 come in? What did they? I can't remember what that was.
It was just extra added expenses year over year. Mostly utilities.
Yeah. Would they, what do we decide about that? Would they turn their?
What?
Internet expense that would be almost $1,000 right there. And if they don't have a lot of visitors, I'm not sure what they're using it for. Can we cut it? I mean, you can propose that however you want. I think they probably need to know that, you know, they should be making some other plans in the future.
I would say just leave it at this point, but we need to tell them that, you know, going forward, we need to be cutting that back. The 30,000, that's in the park.
Yeah.
That seems high. What kind of?
Yeah, so that's going to pay for some of the plumbing. So storm is going in next year, so is some sewer, sanitary sewer, and some water pipes. And we're proposing that the park should pay for some of that under general obligation.
Which will address some of the areas of the park that flood.
Yeah, so the east side of the park where they're putting the splash pad in, kind of past where all the play equipment is, is usually underwater. In the plan, this is to fix some of those issues of the flooding and the constant non-draining, especially from those properties. So they're going to take that and connect it to the storm sewer.
And the Farm City Fund Fest, why does that jump around so much? The 10,000?
Yeah, you know, I can't speak for the committee. I just know that that, I don't know if there was a formal way before this that they were asking for money. You know, this is part of that conversation where we say, you know, are community organizations eligible for tax dollars? You know, that would, I mean, if you zeroed that and the Historical Society out, we would have a 0% increase, probably. It'd be fairly close, maybe a negative.
And I think things like how much we're spending on Farm City Fund Fest have become more evident with the better accounting system we have.
Yeah.
Because now we know exactly how much, and it's much easier to track and see it. Plus, I think we've improved our categories, and it's just much more transparent.
And we have, as a city staff, we have employees that are concerned of Farm City Fund Fest Committee about the amount that they're spending on certain items that the city in the past has just always taken care of, like porta-potties. Porta-potties are very expensive. For that one weekend alone, it costs us almost $3,000. You know, those types of expenses are impacting taxpayers. So I know that they're aware. And we can do whatever council wishes on those.
Do you want to make a proportional cut on that? Do you want to leave Farm City Fund Fest where it is?
Well, it looks like last year, they spent about 6,000. We're budgeting 10, but they're saying there.
So we combine those categories. So they actually spent 6,000 and then an additional, it was over 10,000.
Okay.
It was closer to 12.
It was closer to 12. And that's because they last minute ordered some extra tents that we got the bill for after Farm City Fund Fest.
So the budget is 10,000?
Yes. Yeah, total.
I don't want to mess around hard. I would, I would propose, you know, 25 instead of 30 unless those are set costs. We know it's going to be 30,000. And then maybe reduce the chamber, the rental.
And then five. To five. So that would bring the levy down to 5.2%. Just awareness.
Hey, it is?
And it's a total dollar amount, which is actually, the real cost is 47,000, year-over-year increase.
So what if you propose the reduction on the rentals for it?
5,000.
Cut it in half.
So Farm City Fund Fest would be down to 5,000, and the park improvements would go to 25,000.
Do you also want to reduce the Historical Society then, if you're hitting two other areas?
Include that.
Did we already reduce that from last year?
No. It's been at 5 for a long time.
So we'd get 4,000 on that.
I mean, that makes it fair kind of across the board. Everybody's getting a reduction and going to have to fundraise.
So it puts us down at 3%, 3 and a half?
Yeah. Maybe five.
Yeah.
It's still about five. Did that not update?
Because Farm City Fund Fest and the Historical Society are both nonprofits. They're more entities.
Do we need a motion on that, or is just discussion?
So if you didn't fund any of the, excuse me, Historical Society, your levy would be 1.9%. If you did half, it would be 2.2.
If we did half of the, so that would put it at 2,500 for Historical Society?
And 2.4 is at 4,000.
103% is not bad.
I think leave Historical Society at 4. Let's make them, let's get them in the fundraising mindset.
Yeah, I think. I think it's a really worthwhile thing, and it's great for the community. We, yeah, we just, well, truly, we are.
But they probably need to look at what needs to be done to sustain it. Because it can't just be that the city is the only option for, because I would assume other communities that have them have to do the same kind of thing and come up with how they're subsidizing, having a Historical Society.
We increased our tree budget, right?
Yeah, we did. You know, as the city's streets continue to be a problem, those boulevard trees, some of them have just got to go. They're causing a lot of health and safety issues out on the road. We saw it with the last windstorm. We saw it with the last time when we got that heavy snow. I can almost tell you that we probably have spent half that budget already with proposed things over the winter and then the spring.
Do we have other categories we want to look at? Do you have any other questions? Do we have anybody who signed in?
I don't have anyone to speak.
Okay.
On TNT.
All right.
So, hang on one second. Michael on the street sweeper. So we got 3,000 budgeted for repairs and maintenance on the machine.
Are you on the streets?
It's the sweep.
Oh, that's right.
Is there known things that need to be repaired?
Yeah.
Is it maybe time to start shopping?
Yeah, but they're just.
Better used unit?
They're very expensive, so we're trying to keep our eye out on a used, still good to us, life.
Yes.
Because they're pretty expensive.
Okay. So long as we're making wear.
Yeah, and you know, over the last probably two years, we've spent about 15,000 repairing certain broken parts. We had someone fabricate some new boxes for it because they were shot just because of, you know, the road salt and all the grime. So we are aware. We've been looking, but everything has been over our price range.
Okay.
And those like leaf suckers, I know everyone is obsessed with those. They're like half a million. So.
Could we share with other communities at some point?
I mean, I know New Ulm just bought two brand new ones. I don't know. Mankato actually contracts with Mapleton, and they actually do all of Mapleton's streets. And that's a similar situation.
I think Hutch has like six of them now.
Yeah.
And the John Deere Tractor's the bullet.
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly ask them, but I'm sure we would pay a pretty penny every year to have that happen.
Okay, any more discussion on public hearings?
So our total proposed levy then would be 2, sorry, 925, 354, and 31 cents. It would be a $21,000 increase or a 2.4%.
Decrease.
An increase over last year, though. And I'll let Farm City Fund Fest and the Historical Society know.
It was at 6 when we started, right?
6.3 is what we set the preliminary levy at.
All right. Somebody like to move to close the public hearing? Motion by Ed, is there a second? Second. Second by Jenny. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to new business, the resolution 2024-46, adopting assessments for the 2023 utility and street improvement project.
This was for the first public hearing on the 2023 project. This will be sent certified to the county clerk's office, and they'll put it on the tax rolls for payable 2025. 4% per annum rate at 20 years. And attached was the full assessments.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion by Ed, is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Don. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. We have the assessments. Moving on to 6.2, the resolution regarding, 47, regarding the tax levy for collectible year 2025.
So we'll update the resolution to read 925,354 at a 2.4% increase or 21,489.
Motion by Kelly, is there a second? I'll second. Second by Jenny. Any discussion? Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. The utility rate finalization, ordinance number 2025-001.
So this will be ordinance 2025-001. We'll pass it actually in January. We review it usually at budget time because this is actually where it impacts the most. I wanted to give you a view of the total bond payments so that we understand kind of how municipal bonds work. It's like municipal bond, one at one time. So when we do public work projects anywhere in the city, from Eighth Street to Hennepin to Second Street, those categories always hold some type of loan, right, against them. And we pay that loan with water storm sewer. So when people pay their water storm sewer electric bill, we use that money to pay on these loans. And they're payable every single year. So when we talk about the total bond payments, that's really that one, two, the fifth category over. That is what we have to cover as a city. So you see the next couple of years, '25, '26, and '27, they get increasingly higher and then dip down. And that is because we have some that will eventually fall off. I think there's also something to be said about the way we're doing it now versus before is that we're really holding the enterprise funds accountable for their portion. What was happening was kind of a blend of who pays, and we're trying to get rid of that. So this is a very concrete look at what our utility rates need to pay for in order to be a sustainable enterprise fund. On the backside of that, in 2016, we did a rate study. That rate study was looked at again in 2022 and in 2023. Those rates that we are proposing from the study are really to cover the already existing bonds, which we weren't doing a really good job of, and to ensure that the levy, the GEO amount levy, is correct. You'll notice that the levy amount for 2024 looks really high. That is because that was our proposed, we thought we were already going to have to pay most of it in '25. So next year, you will see a levy increase because of the way that the bond fell in 2026. So that GEO bond line that's on there for 120,000 right now is actually going to go up. When we looked at rates, and I'll pull up the other one because it's full, there were a couple of things that stood out to us. First, electric. There was some discrepancies between people that pay taxes in town and live in town versus those that do not, right? So they're on what we call the farm line or out of town. They're out of our legal jurisdiction boundaries, but they still use our power, our NMPA power. So we are setting the new residential rate at .1254. That is to keep up with not only our utility and increased pressure on electric. That is to keep up with not only our utility and increased pressure on electric, but from, you know, the 2016 study, we're actually supposed to be quite above that. The farm line account will be at a 3% increase, that .1285. So there is, that will increase a farm line account by about $30 a month. So it'll be seen. When we talk about our commercial customers, commercial causes a lot more. I will say this, they put a lot more strain on the system than our regular residential customers do. Right now, their rate is the exact same or was the exact same as residential. We are proposing that we increase that to .1326. That actually levels out their demand. So our demand is actually pretty low comparatively to what we get billed at. If we put that in a dollar amount per kilowatt hour, MMPA charges us $9.00. We are charging like 6 right now. So we have to figure out that discrepancy somehow because we're, we're already blending those rates. We are proposing that we keep the electric base fee. Solar credit would remain the same. And solar credits, just so you guys know, our solar customers that we have, those are in a DER, or D E R, contract with that is on a contract with them. So when they sign up for solar, they know exactly what we're going to pay them back. So if they are using our electric, which happens with all of our solar customers, especially on very cloudy days, they're actually getting charged .254 while we're only paying them .0764 per kilowatt hour. When we talk about water, we are proposing an increase to water. Water is actually probably our healthiest enterprise fund. And their increase is less than the rest. That was what DDA had kind of suggested to council at the beginning of 2nd Street. Theirs would be about 3 cents, 3 and 1/2 cents per gallon. If you, if you math that, it's 3 and 1/2 cents per gallon. Commercial rates and industrial rates, they're already higher than residential. Obviously, again, those rates are reflective of their use and their demand on our system. I will tell you that water, we are already trying to look at replacing filters and extending the life of our water plant. We've done, I think, a really great job at maintaining the water plant, but it needs, it needs new filters. We did have them preliminary estimated last year at the beginning of the year and it was, it was very high. It was almost $400,000 to get new filters. So we're not there yet. We can gimp along for a little while longer and
How long would that extend the plant?
About five years, five to six years. It would extend the life of the plant. If you do really great routine maintenance, you know, the, the real life of a filter nowadays is about 10 years. Then you, after, after six to seven years, you got to start thinking about replacing the filters again. And we have all, you know, our manganese in this area is just very, very high. I think we all smell it in our water. It's the aquifer that we use, obviously, but we're, we're working on reducing that, but it takes some chemical. The water base fee would go up to $15. The sewer base fee would go up to 15.39. Commercial sewer would also go up. And Heartland has a special meter because they use us as their primary for sewer. Theirs would be 1 and 1/4 per gallon. So storm sewer is probably the, the biggest change right now. I just can't remember. Storm is paying $8.10. Right now, they come nowhere near close in storm to pay enough their actual obligation to our bonds and not even close. Even without 2nd Street, they weren't close. And so Shannon was proposing a $26 base fee. We did the current math in our calculations. We actually reduced that to 18.53. The only difference between storm is that storm actually is getting broke off this year into its own separate enterprise fund. It used to be blended with her general obligation and we are, we're pulling that out in 2024. And we'll actually see actual financials to that bond. Other than that, the other the other increase that you're going to see is on our ambulance calls. We haven't raised the price in quite a while. Right now, we're at $800 per call. We're asking city council to go to 1,000. There are some caps, obviously, with Medicare and Medicaid that only pay us back 500. They only, they're about 30% short of what they should be paying us and that is beyond our issue. We can't really solve that. We hope that the feds and the state figure it out sometime soon because it is impacting significantly the ambulance. So with $1,000 per call, that is hopefully going to get us to almost even. As you remember, ambulance hasn't made money for quite a few years.
Going back to the utilities.
Yeah.
On an average household, what are you looking at? I mean, what does that come to for an average household?
Yeah.
Base fees and
So we gave the example earlier this year. The only difference is, is the $5 fee was added back in. And we did that because we, we couldn't figure out how to pay for light poles without it, honestly, unless we increased the fee even more. So on an average two-person household, if your average bill was $164, and this does not include garbage and recycling. So just so you know, if you just took utilities, it was 16440 this last year. It would be about $20 to $25 more in 2025. And again, this, this means that they would be covering their bond obligations. It also means that, you know, we would be covering our debt and our future projects when it comes to some of our water and wastewater.
One, one of the things that's so difficult when you're looking at this, if, if we had addressed this in 2014, when we first started talking about it, if we had made smaller incremental increases along the way, as we were encouraged to do back then, we wouldn't have to be looking at a larger increase right now. But I, I've always said the cost of, you know, even if you don't use a drop of water, there's still a late in cost for the ability to turn on that faucet. And, you know, it, it's, it costs the city to have that there and to maintain it. So, you know, some of the, the base fees are a fair way to, to address that.
How do we compare with surrounding towns as far as utilities?
We had that not
Been on the lower end, yeah.
We had that not too long ago.
Yeah.
Can't remember if it's this one or not.
I don't have any utilities folder.
Is it? Well, that's percentage increases.
Utilities on rates, I think.
Is it this one or the actual PDF? We'll find out. These are our old rates, so I haven't, I haven't updated the chart, but if you look at Arlington, Olivia, they're significantly higher than we are. If you just, this is just, you know, base fees. If you just looked at base fees.
Can you make that old man size?
Oh, yep, I sure can.
There we go.
Much better.
Sorry. And you know, especially like Arlington, I know that they are raising their electrical this year too. They actually had some deferred costs from their project that we didn't. You know, they had, their street project, they actually contracted someone to come do their utilities. So put up the poles and that costs them a lot of money, I think upwards into $300,000.
So if we go 4892, then there's only two of the surrounding towns that are less.
Yeah, and this is just a general overview.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's just base fees, yeah.
But even with increases in the electrical, our, our electric utility is still cheaper than XL substantially.
By almost 10%.
Yeah.
Or Brown County REA.
And has consistent, and McLeod County.
Yeah, McLeod is very high.
Yeah. All right. Do you have more questions about that? Anybody like to make a motion regarding that proposed ordinance?
And just like any ordinance, it has to be heard twice. So you'll hear this again in January and that will, it will finalize.
But we still need a motion.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the preliminary.
Motion by Ed. Is there a second?
I second it.
Second by Wanda. Any further discussion? Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Pose same sign. Motion carried. Moving on to 6.4, the splash pad bid. We have three bids.
Yeah, and their bids are not comparable. So CRS actually came in the lowest. The other two did not include things like installation cost or shipping. And I, we don't really know why. So CRS is the one that originally looked at our plans, went within the park committee's budget. And so they're looking at about 460,000. I will tell you that the longer we wait, the more they are going to increase. We've already been notified once this fall of a $10,000 increase. And I'm sure if we don't lock it in this spring, we'll hear about other increases. The other two bidders, and I apologize, I think it's Water Play. Water Play gave us a really nice proposal and I appreciated everything they put together. I thought they were very thorough, but they didn't include an actual installation of how much that would cost. So it looks like it's really, really inexpensive and then you notice that you can't install it for that price. So.
So did they not install? Is that why they didn't?
We would have to go get a contractor to install is kind of what Paul had told me from ISG.
What are the estimated costs for this?
The splash pad?
Yeah.
It's 460.
That, that's just
Yeah, and that would be a guaranteed cost. I mean, they don't, the splash pad portion won't, wouldn't go up. It's 459,342 and 10 cents. It's weird how government works, 10 cents.
This has a system that recycles the water?
Yeah, that's another thing too. The other two, Water Play did have a system, but it was, it would have to, you'd have to construct another structure. We're using Vortex kind of dome system where you don't need to create a separate structure. It's actually kind of like a dome that just recycles the water. And the other one that we got didn't have a recycling option at all. We would have had to buy from Vortex to put it in, which I, I mean, we definitely could do if we really wanted to. But there wasn't a cost savings necessarily for that.
We've looked at the terms and conditions on that contract and it looks acceptable.
Yeah. I know ISG has dealt with CRS before and they're a state bid contractor. So technically, we didn't have to go out for additional bids, but we did because we wanted to know.
Who's doing the one on Bird Island?
I don't know who's doing Bird Island. I don't know if it's CRS. I, I think it's they don't have a recycling portion in Bird Island and I'm pretty sure it's Playtime.
And I saw a fund, Henderson's looking at building one too, huh?
Henderson is. I don't know where they are.
I just saw a fundraiser poster.
Yeah.
I don't think they're bringing recycling water either.
Yeah.
Michael, do you want to sort of refresh for all of us how we're proposing to fund this?
Yeah, absolutely. So throughout our capital expenditure funds, city council has appropriated money from those savings accounts to pay for this. So parks are very different than our enterprise funds. They're very different from our general obligation bonds. Parks, according to DDA, cannot really be bonded for unless it's a referendum on a ballot. So your only two real options are put it on the ballot or pay for it through savings. You can't tax directly for it unless the taxpayers okay it, obviously. Like North Mankato, to pay for Caswell Park has, has a, a sales tax that pays for that giant infrastructure. So this is coming out of our savings and our proposal to council was, you know, if we pay back $125,000 every year for the next five years, we will pay back the amount. But, you know, just like anything, this also means that we are going to, you know, be building other projects. Like for instance, the Street Sweeper, you know, we have to keep that thing going because we can't pay for another one for at least the next five years. But there was definitely sufficient funds in there. State statute guides cities on debt and how much we can have in our bank account. I mean, just to give you an idea of our funding mechanism, our 3M, our 4M account, excuse me, our 4M account that does investments gained about $150,000 this year come the end of the year. So we did try to divest some of our, our money to get a bigger return on investment for the community so that we can pay back the splash pad in a faster motion. But it's not directly increasing our taxes. It's just we're paying back that savings account every year, which, you know, does mean that we can't go out and buy a new Street Sweeper right away. But that's kind of what we had planned. In the diagram that I put in here.
But you can look at it as using the money that we've been investing and saving rather than
Yeah, and if you're wondering about the whole project, obviously, we are going to have to remove some trees because you don't want a tree over a splash pad because of the recycling portion. We're actually looking into moving one of them, like scooping it up and putting it somewhere else. Jason doesn't know if that's possible just because of the age of the tree. It's not the big tree. Don't worry. It's not the big tree. But there's some things that, you know, we want to make sure happen, including removing some of that path, making it ADA accessible and wider. This would just go from parking lot to parking lot. We aren't really doing anything with the playground this year just because financially it wasn't feasible. We're not doing anything to the bathrooms right now. We are thinking about painting, replacing some of the sinks that got damaged. But yeah, I, I think that it's a feasible project over the next five years.
And we could apply for a, a grant for some of this next
Yes, that is in April again. We will apply for the
Especially with the ADA bathrooms.
Yep.
And making the, the path more ADA accessible too is, is a really important thing.
My hope is that they'll help us create the trail system all the way around. That would be ideal.
Well, I'm going to step out. I'm going to make a motion to accept the CRS bid.
I will second it. All right, we have a motion by Ed and a second by Wanda. Is there any discussion? Any further questions about the project or funding or anything? Any further questions about the project or funding or anything? Any discussion? All right, I'll call the motion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. All right. Five point six, library board letter of recognition, Cheryl Melheim.
Cheryl Melheim's going back to work, and so she can't continue to commit to the library board. She's been really great. She kind of acted as her first chair of the library board, and she did a great job kind of steering the kittens in the right direction. So I really appreciate Cheryl, but she just can't, time obligation wise, continue.
All right, so do we need a motion to accept that, or?
Yes.
Okay, motion by Kelly.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All the same side? Just tell Cheryl we appreciate her efforts very much. All right, committee notices, updates. Michael, you got first.
Yeah, I just, I wanted to talk a little bit about streams. I know that you've been hearing about it nonstop, and it's kind of getting annoying. We had another meeting today that really looked over what the costs and the rates were being proposed versus what we need them to be. You know, the wastewater plant in general wouldn't be necessarily a Winthrop plant. It would belong to a wastewater district. And without boring you with details, the rates right now that they're proposing are just not financially possible for anyone, for industries and for residents. So we're continuing to work on that. I will tell you that we did get an opportunity to present at the DNR Roundtable. The DNR Roundtable is an exclusive event at the DNR. Only three communities and three projects are chosen. We go before four hundred and fifty constituents, activists for water, DNR. And those, that opportunity, I guess, to present in front of legislatures and the governor about the project is going to be really important. There's actually five other states' DNRs that are going to be there listening to the presentations. And all of them are focused on water scarcity and how our project fits that model. So we continue to work on it. It's not there, it's not even close. Julie, thanks for coming today and sitting through that. I know it's very technical, but it is, it's really good work. We just have a lot to do. We really are trying to figure out where that next step is and how we can go forward. Because we know, like currently, we can never propose it to the city council. And really, one of the biggest sticking points right now is you build this wastewater plant, it takes care of all the waste for DFA, Harlan Corn Products, all four towns. It goes to this one plant. We have employees, the operational costs are pretty high. They are in any wastewater. The problem is, is that internally in our city, we still have projects to do, right, that include wastewater projects. So not only would their rates be on top of our rates, but how do you blend those? And how does that fit our needs? You know, if you take a sewer rate and just say, well, it's just going to go ten times higher, well, that will, everyone will leave. I mean, no one would stick around. So we're still trying to figure out that formula. I will tell you that as a municipality, as four municipalities, this would be the first rural water project when it comes to a water reuse facility that anyone in the state is tackling. So it's kind of the first, that's why MPCA wants to hear about it. You know, it's taking seven permits for them down to one. They know that you can't find workers, right? You can't find workers in wastewater right now. Even the people that are contracting to look at and monitor facilities are having troubles finding workers. So building one facility just makes sense for all of us. So streams is going forward, but it is, I would say, very monotonous and meticulous calculations, and we still have not arrived at a final formula.
There's very smart people involved, which is very technical. But I think one of the things that I find encouraging about it is just the discussion between those four communities and our business partners. It, you know, small communities are going to have a harder and harder time paying for things on their own. You know, like you mentioned, the Street Sweeper or something. If we can find ways that we can work together, you know, when we helped share the police department with Givens, all of those things, I think, just build that shared trust and ability to work together. And that's worth a lot right there.
Yeah, and I think, you know, on the wastewater side, we conceptually understand that it's feasible. Like, we understand that it's feasible to go from New Auburn and pump it here. Cortland already does it to New Wall, right? We already know that conveyance is probably conceptually feasible. And, you know, in the future, what does water look like? Because every single one of these towns cannot build their own water drinking plant. It just is not financially feasible. In the fifties, when most of these water plants went in, right, there was a huge federal program that said, after the Great War, we are going to build out these water plants. And then since then, we haven't had a really good idea about how to do that. So we have already approached legislatures, we're looking for earmarks, we're looking for anything to help us with preliminary engineering. And that would be the next step, so. EDA-wise, we're almost done with the year. You'll get some final statistics in January, but it looks like we gave out about sixty thousand dollars' worth of small business loans. The facade grant was about sixty-five thousand dollars. Not all of that's paid out, obviously, because they're still working on them. But the programs were definitely utilized this year, and you'll see it downtown. You know, we've opened quite a few small businesses, so EDA is just humming along.
Good. Anything else? Fire, you know, see anybody from the fire department?
No, Adam was going to come, I didn't know anyone.
I was just going to say this, going back to built some public work concerning our charter. Have the police and fire department taken a look at that also? Or ambulance and fire department?
Yeah, we have, and it's.
Because I know they wanted to make some possible changes.
Really bizarre, to say the least. So we have fire and ambulance, not only in chapter two, but we also have them in our personnel policy. And I think everyone's been going off the personnel policy. We're looking to actually just brush those up a little bit. But it may be not be on this first reading because we have to stettonally figure out what authority chapter two gives them and how do we get rid of the rest? Like, the fire captain stuff and the ambulance captain stuff just needs to kind of go away because that's in our personnel policy now, and it should probably be in chapter two. It's kind of like what council did with the personnel policy when they pulled it out.
All right, library.
All right, yeah, we met here, and it's getting close to the end of the year, so they're really watching spending and things until after the first of the year and new budget starts. They're still, they're meeting with the rep now on trying to get more information about the book leasing program that we talked about that they saw in Lesur. So they're still working on that. TDS just gave a hundred thousand dollar grant. Seventeen hundred of that goes to Winthrop directly for nonfiction collection updates. And so libraries are working together and pulling out books that have not been checked out in five years and weeding that collection and then looking at what do they need to add for nonfiction and all age groups to try to up the interest in that. Their friends group has been meeting. They finally have their EIN number, but they still need six hundred dollars to apply for nonprofit status. So they're still working on where that's coming from. They have a book folding gnome craft thing planned for Christmas in the country from one to three. And also on Friday have a program with leather souls musicians and things here for all age groups for that. And they're looking at, we have tentatively booked a murders for fun fundraiser for March fifteenth and sixteenth. That's a company that comes in and does like the murder mystery dinners.
Oh, it's a mystery.
Yeah, murder mystery dinner. Yeah, with that. And they have a mocktails class coming up in January. And we've also coordinated with Gaylord and Givens Libraries. Alex Messenger, who survived Bear Mawley and wrote a book, is going to be here speaking. And everybody that's heard him so far has said he's a really dynamic speaker.
Who is that?
Alex Messenger?
Yeah, when?
That's coming up, I believe, in February.
Yeah, February.
Yeah.
Or January, end of January?
End of January, first part of February. But it'll be like three days in a row, so if you can't go to the one here, you could hopefully go to either Gaylord or Givens, it's a collaborative effort for that. And that's about it for where they're at for right now.
I just wanted to add to the library, Michelle's last day was Wednesday. She's going to take the library director position in Gaylord, so she'll be right next door to us. Hopefully some collaboration there in the future.
Okay, moving on to public works, so let's see, Joy here, do you have anything?
I don't.
Okay. Planning commission?
They meet actually next week on the tenth, so nothing from them yet.
Okay.
Write that down.
RSPR, nothing we have not met, and utilities?
Just that their rates were out in the bills, they'll be there again next month, and they're going to be printed in the paper.
Okay, ambulance, go ahead and go ahead.
About the only thing is, we've got a really nice group of people that are taking the class, doing the bridge class from EMR to EMT, so we're seeing a lot of good interest. It'll actually give some, I told them that they, that just because we're adding people doesn't mean people can retire. But it's giving, it will give us the opportunity if somebody needs to retire that they can retire, so. The class is filling out nicely. Sam coordinated that for us, and it's filling out nicely. And I talked to Lafayette today, the Lafayette ambulance captain, Mark Dick, and he said that he's got two that'll come, that he's going to encourage to come over. Gaylord's got five or six for the EMR class. So it could be a thirty-person class if it keeps going the way it is.
We'll be taking over this room on Thursdays, so.
For nine weeks.
How many from Winter?
From Winthrop? I know we have, I think, three going from EMR to EMT bridge class. We have, I think, three EMTs. Gaylord Fire is going to send, I think, three EMRs over. I think a police officer from Gaylord is going to come over and do EMR to EMT. Givens got two. A few other random ones have popped up, and it's open to anybody, really. So I mean, if someone heard, because Ridgewater also has theirs. It put up on their website and promoting it, too. So people may come from Hotch if they want to and do it that way. It's nice because it's a hybrid.
Every Thursday night?
So for the first nine weeks in person, every Thursday from six p.m. to ten p.m. Those first nine weeks, we'll be doing like the psychomotor skills, CPR, doing the test cells for that. Then the remaining nine or eight, nine weeks is actually all on Zoom. So we don't actually have to meet in person. So that makes it a little bit easier, too.
Nice community collaboration.
I should mention, too, that most of the people that are taking the, well, EMT to EMR bridge and the EMT are young people. Twenties or twenties or less, so it's, we're getting some good interest.
That's great to hear. It is, because, you know, it's really easy to volunteer, and you hear all the time, nobody volunteers anymore. But we do have some young people who really are stepping up, which is great.
Winthrop's plus with both Fire and EMS.
We are.
Not so much police.
Nice segue.
He said what he said.
All right, police committee. Logan, you have anything for us?
I don't really have a lot, you guys.
Okay.
Ed, are you still with Hunter?
All right, cable commission. Do we have anything?
We met, but we, there wasn't a lot discussed. We talked a little bit about RSPR, what's going to happen with that and whether or not we'll get funding from that again.
Oh, yeah.
Whether or not we'll get that.
And park committee?
We haven't met since our last.
Now that we have splash pad, we'll have to start picking out colors and all.
Okay, I think that's it for committees. If there's nothing else, somebody like to move to their end?
Oh.
All those in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.